Everybody have their microphones on?
Their mics on.
I can't see you.
Okay, we'll work on that. Now, we can see now.
There's torn.
There we go. You can see us now, right?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thanks for joining tonight, Gobby.
Thank you, Tim.
No worries, Mayor.
Perfect. Yes. How's that work for you, Tim?
Perfect.
Awesome. Okay.
I can't see you again. Now you're back.
Can you hear us now?
You can hear me now.
Okay, the camera is gonna snap off. It, I don't know what's wrong with the camera. It stays on for a while, then it snaps off. I'll try to stay on top of it while we're talking. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Okay, so basically, we're kinda gonna, tonight, kinda find out where we're at. You know, we've been, unfortunately, I think there was a lot of lack of understanding on our part of real, the status of really where things were at. And so, we're gonna kinda try and dig into that a little bit tonight and find out where projects are really out, where the needs are really out for our customers and our citizens and the people that are trying to do business in our city. And that's kinda the purpose of that. And we do need to do roll call, just so that we know who's present. So, Tim, if you could just say your name for the recording.
Me, Stridge.
And starting with my left, if you could just say your name into the mic. Fred Cuthbertson, present.
Linda Fredericks, present.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Wingard with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development.
And Torne Nielsen, president.
Michael Didwell, new planner from Monroe.
And that's part of the thing too tonight. So, in the absence of our former city administrator, unexpected departure, we have been lucky enough that the city of Philomath has graciously agreed to help us out in a huge, huge manner with a very experienced planner. And I don't know if you wanted to do the introduction.
Would you wanna finish doing your roll call?
Oh, uh, you wanna?
Mark Murray, Public Works Lead.
Okay.
Introduce myself, Dan Sheets, Mayor.
Oh, sorry about that now.
You're fine.
I'm used to just getting the planner, so.
You're fine.
So, yeah, I was gonna just say a little bit, you kind of, you've kind of gone into a little bit, but that's okay. So, as Commissioner Cuthbertson has already indicated, so our city administrator is now our former city administrator. So, we now have, we have contracted with the city of Philomath, and we have Michael Didwell with us to help us eight hours a week at this point. The only thing I really wanted to instill with the planning commission, aside from the fact I'm gonna be here running the Zoom program here, is that we relied on the former city administrator. He was, everything was siloed into him, and it's created some huge issues for us. And having that one individual knowing everything is created a huge problem for us now in the aftermath of him resigning and leaving. So, all I would like to say is if we can all try to work together and learn and get to know and, you know, work with the folks that we have the planning projects with or anything for that matter with the city. So, there's more than just one head, you know, that has all this information. If we can all have, you know, more than one, you know, buddy up, whatever you wanna do, whatever you wanna call it, so that it's not all in one person in case we lose that person. And finding that, it's, we're starting to do that. At City Hall as an example, Don and Mark, they're learning, and we are sharing across each other's teams and departments, so we know what's going on. If we can do that with the planning projects, their city council, think there's all kinds of things that I, I personally was unaware of that we are learning about now. Some good, some not so good, but we are learning, and we are continuing to learn. So, I just say keep communication, you know, pathways open. That's all I suggest at this point. And I appreciate each and every one of you and the help and time that you're providing us. That's a huge, huge help to us. So, thank you very much for all that. Cheryl, back to you.
All right. Well, thank you. So, you know.
Um, city of Monroe, you're muted.
Sorry, there you go.
So, when you don't know what you don't know, being a small city, sometimes there's some growing pains and, and and we've relied heavily to the mayor's point on single individuals. And that's been the history of Monroe since I first started going to these meetings, I don't know, 13 years ago, or that there was one individual, then another individual took over, another individual took over, and those, those individuals had all of the information and helped make all the decisions. And we were kind of, we were briefed basically every time we had a meeting. That was when we kinda got a briefing. And so, our, our goal now moving forward is to be a lot more involved, so there's more people involved with planning and being aware and kinda trying to help whoever's in the planning position help as, as long as we're helping and not getting in your way. So, so, Michael, do you mind introducing yourself? And then, Chris, if you don't mind introducing a little bit about what your vision is as well?
Michael Didwell, and this is the second Tuesday I have provided assistance to City of Monroe. I've been a planner with City of Philomath for eight months. Prior to that, I was the planner for City of Manhattan, Kansas for almost two years. And then also have been a permanent technician back in the day as well. So, it's like, I'm about experienced in frame reviews, looking at drawings, all the way to planning and coordinating meetings and what have you. And kind of like, my role in this is to bridge the gap of communication, see what's missing in anything, make sure, like, if there's notices, the notice has gone out, because it's like I looked at the, like, the process side. So, that way, that's, right now, I think it's like the nuts and bolts is probably what's the most important. It's like, okay, for which procedure, what process needs to be followed, what's the timelines, and what have you. So, I kinda, in the first half of the first day I was there, made my cheat sheet, just went through the zoning code and making sure I got that part down, down pat before then going through and starting to evaluate these. And I've worked with some of the people that are on the list. I'll talk about later on, what's needed and everything, and just trying to get those forwards. So, I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be of assistance.
Yes, Chris Workman, city manager in Philomath. Been there about 11 years now, and in Philomath, just for a little bit of perspective, we don't have a separate community development director or a planning director. I oversee the day-to-day operations of the planning that takes place of both building permits and planning. And I've been doing that for the 11 years I've been there. So, I've got a good experience in running everything from lot line adjustments to subdivisions and annexations. Haven't done other urban growth, banner expansions yet, but my planner that worked for me previously worked with the city of Adair on urban growth expansion. I heard about it every day. So, pretty well versed in it there as well. So, you know, I talked early on with Mayor Sheets about offering some support. When we'd first heard rumors of Steve looking to retire at some point at the end of the year, and I'd offer then, say, if you're getting a pickle, need a little bit of help, reach out. And then, I think it was an email or a phone call, say, help, we're ready. So, Michael and I came out two weeks ago, Friday, looked through things. And my role primarily, as I told the mayor, is, is really to make sure that Michael's got the support that he needs in being here. And we have committed in the contract to have him here one day a week. And then, obviously, if there's little phone calls and things that need to happen throughout the week and emails, that's, that's gonna be fine as well. Michael's a professional. He'll manage his time well. He'll do well for you. He's a great investigatory planner, which means he likes getting into the nitty-gritty and finding the details out. You'll see that in his report later, and this meeting, I'm sure. But he also has a great personality. People flock to him. We just, we've got a longstanding issue in the city of Philomath with some lot lines that weren't done correctly. Had a neighborhood meeting, and Michael just lights up the room when people get to talk to him. He's much more friendly to talk to than I am, apparently. Maybe that was a little bit, might have been a little good cop, bad cop, but, but people do relate well to Michael. He cares about the communities that he works in, and I have every confidence that he's gonna help to identify where those different planning files are at, as we've talked through what needs to be done. And when he reaches out, when he reaches out to your property owners and your residents, it's gonna be in an effort to try to get to solutions and try to help them do with their property what it is they want to do with their property. He's also great at getting into the code, so he'll get very familiar and already has read through a lot of your development codes, so he'll continue to do that. And then my role again will be to support him. So, I will be checking in with him, if not weekly, every couple of weeks for sure to see where he's at, checking status of things, and just giving a little bit of oversight there. Similar way to do with the files that he's got open with the city of Philomath. Not so much in Adair Village. I've got a city administrator there that we contract with him on, on Wednesdays to be in Adair Village, and the city administrator there oversees Michael's work while he's there in Adair Village and the planning files, whatnot. So, I'm a little more hands-off there. But with Monroe, as I told him, the mayor, you're kinda getting a two-for-one, paying for Michael's time to be here, but then I'll be supervising and overseeing the work that gets done. At least till we get things rolling, and he gets more comfortable with where things are at and the code and everything there. So, if at any time I can be a resource to you, feel free to reach out. But again, Michael's gonna do a great job for it. I've got every confidence in him. So, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Chris. Patrick, do you mind introducing yourself and tell a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, sure. Hey, good evening. My name is Patrick Wingard. I'm with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development. I'm the regional representative for the Southern Willamette Valley. I live and work out of Springfield. I worked with Adair Village on their urban growth boundary amendment. I've been a planner for, in Oregon for about 20 or so years, and I've worked on a full suite of, of applications. But really, what my job boils down to is, is just like Chris, I'm here to support your staff, your elected officials, your mayor, to advance your goals. I had a chance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for sending me some city documents. I went through your, your goals, city council goals, some of the objectives relating particularly to land use and some rezones. So, I'm basically here just to listen. I just live like a half hour away. So, I am happy to come back. We had, we had a good rhythm going in 2019, 2012, before the pandemic. Y'all updated your comprehensive plan. You had a group, I think, from U of O or OSU. You had some students doing some work for you, and I got to know the community pretty well then. Pandemic struck, and, you know, Dan, we were talking, I can't believe it's been five years since I've been in Monroe. It's, it's hard to believe. But again, I'm, I'm Patrick with DLCD, and I'm just, I'm just here to serve you and support you in whatever way that I can, especially when a state agency or a state rule or statute impedes your progress. That's really where I can come in handy. Like, hey, Patrick, you know, we're, we're up against this rule or statute, you know, can you, can you help us find a path forward? So, things like that.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Before we get going much further, I think what I'd like to do is now that kind of the, those of them that are in attendance today, kinda heard what's going on here, I'd like to open up to a brief public comments for anybody that would like to make a public comment, because he, we may have some answers further on in the meeting with regard to some of your public comments. So, if you can keep it brief to about three minutes or so a person, and just introduce yourself.
Do you wanna have them come up to a mic or something? Is this one set up?
Is that one set up, Mark? It typically is, but I don't know if it's been charged.
About half-charged. It's on. I'm not sure if it's.
Can you hear out of that one, Tim?
It's making some green movement there on the mic.
Okay. So, if you could, if, if, start with you, if you don't mind introducing yourself and briefly.
Yeah, I'm John Walberg. It's my son Trevin, purchasing property here in the room in the Eighth Street a couple of months ago now. And I talked to Steve a little bit about some positive. It has some pretty major drainage, water drainage problems that have historically flooded up the neighborhood. To the west side of his property. It's actually field, and it runs into an easement in between Trevin's property and his property, and floods that whole neighborhood. It's been an oil wind bomb for a long time. It's not this, this unTrevin's property that's flooding. It's basically everybody in that area. Probably involves maybe two C blocks or three C blocks. It's a big problem for everyone in that area. A lot of the problems, where all this water's coming from, but I know. I know all as well. It's a consistent flow coming right down through. You can sit there and watch it all day, it's just a consistent flow. And so, it, it's clearly a spring coming down on that west side.
I know where I raised that.
Yeah. And I talked to Thorin about it. You know, just, just chugging air explosion, explosion on it and figuring out what we can do to.
Sorry. Folks online can't hear you.
I'll try to keep it short for you guys. What I, I talked to Mark a little bit about some solutions.
I would like to propose having a ditch dug along the fence line of, of Thorin's property in Trevins and running it to the north. It would be a natural grade of the land for it to, the water to flow that way. And to the north of Trevin, and about a block east, there is a fairly good-sized collection line there where we could tie it into, and it could run to, I assume that your stormwater runs to the creek.
All of our storm runs to the Long Tom.
Oh, yeah, to, yeah, to the Long Tom, right. So, we could run it to the Long Tom. It wouldn't, you know, we could correct this problem. That's a huge problem for everybody right now. And I would love to get a solution done sooner than later, because it's, it's gone on for a long, long time. I know for everybody in the neighborhood, I've talked to everybody there, and like, oh, yeah, this is.
And you're at Eight Domain?
Yeah, Eight, Eighth, North Eight.
Yeah, North Eight. It's 204 North Eight. This is address.
And I, and I talked to Mark. Mark actually was very kind, came out late one evening. I was out there throwing some rock down. Mark went over the whole property with me, walked it with me. He tried giving me a couple of solutions. You know, just a couple of things to think about, possibilities, running out to the field where you guys eventually may have some houses, maybe tying into it from there, running it to city storm.
For the time being, I did a French drain around the house just to protect the house from further damage. But, I mean, it's not a, it's a temporary fix. It's not a permanent fix by any means.
This is adjacent to the Pacific Northwest field there. So, the, when I, I discussed this with Steve, the hi- his recommendation had to do with the revision to the stormwater system that was gonna, that was planned for that area, and that this would be potentially a way to incorporate, you know, the, and tie into that.
No, there's, the water that is running right now, it's flooding the field alongside of Trevin's property, something terrible also. And I know his neighbor that's going to be building a really nice house there this summer wants to. I don't see any way he's gonna build, build that house until something's done with this water issue. It's, it's, it's gotta get fixed. So, yeah.
Just coming up with a solution for it, and, you know.
Yeah. You know, I could share my phone number with you guys if you wanted to write it down.
Sure.
Trevins.
Mine, my number's 541-729-8425.
Mine is 517-8239. That's 541-517-8239. If any of you guys wanted to talk to me a little more about it, I'm kinda semi-retired. I would love to get to some solutions for this sooner than later if we can.
That might be something we run by Chuck Schultz and, and, and maybe even you when it comes to Pacific, what their plans are, and if they got a mitigation strategy already in works, and then.
I mean, he bought this property so he could build a shop. And unfortunately, the way it is right now, it's not really feasible.
And it's got a good chunk of land on it, and I wanna be able to use the land, you know. So, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you guys for your time.
Well, one thing to add to, I was speaking with, and of course, I'm like, you know, I'm Darryl Long at Benton County, and he was talking about, and it sounds like it's that same area that he thinks that a geotech and hydrology report should be run on anything in the future to see, since we kinda know that there is a spring, and then the soils there are clay, so that it doesn't absorb, it just runs.
Just run, yeah, yeah, it's ter- it's terrible.
Yeah. So, trying to find out, it's like anything that's being developed in that direction that hasn't been developed. It's like after Darryl's recommendation has been that.
I think a ditch run into the, I think a ditch run to the north would be the good solution, and then run it east from there. But, um, that's just, uh, I mean, I worked for the city junction for 20 years. I know a little bit about utility work, but I don't claim to be an expert of any, but enough to get myself in trouble. So, thank you again for all you guys' time.
Yeah. I don't have any cards. Have any with you? I'll look. Jody?
I have a question from what they just said. I was like, ask.
Sure.
I own property on North Eight. Isn't that, what's that dedicated storm drainage for that ditch where this property is, if he went north of that water?
I am not familiar.
Relay on that. I may know what we're talking about. I think Mark saw as well. It's another possible solution. There is a ditch running along the Steve's property, the gentleman that bought that field there next to me. It's an existing ditch. This kind of needs cleaned out. And then there's a basin down at the end of that. So, possibly.
I think that was dedicated up there.
Possible culvert across the driveway. But then again, you're talking money that, you know, has to get rather driven.
Been there as long as I've been.
Yeah, you'd have to go.
There's also one on the north side.
That's one. Yeah, that's, yeah.
And I think that's, that's the one I'm talking about. That's gonna be a dedicated, it's farther east though, that Trevin's property is down. Yeah, but it goes up that porch. What is that, ten? Up there, along, along your field. Is that the tent up there?
Yeah, you mean, I, I think you're talking about the, the culvert, but at, at Maine? Is that the one that you're talking about?
No, the one on the north side, comes off the beach, there by Kelly goes up. That's what I was saying at the time. There's a drain. That's supposed to be a natural. That was a dedicated drain at one of mine, I think.
Yeah, so I think you're talking about the one, the main, the main ditch that runs along. Yeah, so they, they are talking about that one. Problem is, there's half an inch of, of that fence line that runs to the west. So, from eight to up towards 10th, ninth, tenth, along that chain of fence, right at the corner of Carushis property. You got, or Carushis property, and then the one that's next to it. There is a ditch about three-quarters of the way down the fence line that takes some water, but it doesn't take the water from their property. And they're talking about running to the north and basically just continuing that ditch up and tying into that.
The other thing is, that being a spring bill, how's that work with the Senate? Our recording legislature bills are in session now for the well water, spring water. And if that, you can adjust that according to those bills.
It is, so, so the bottom of the field is a wetlands, but, and it is, and it is seasonal in that it, 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 it's gonna dry out seasonally. So, we're right in the very thick of it. But it's not a constant spring. So.
Did you have, did you have another one? You, okay.
I'm Jody Khan. I own the storage units and stuff on the north end of town. Talking with Michael several times now. There's, I wanna expand the storage units. The only way I can expand them is use shipping containers to keep the costs down based on the people, customers in the Monroe area. I'd like to put 10 on the east property line, but there's nothing in the code in Monroe for that. There's, and that's an extension of the, inside the property, but it's also an extension of the building. And they're doing it all over. They just did a big project in Eugene. So, I was just curious, is, I'd like to continue this, and I've kinda done a preliminary plan. Michael's got that. And I wanna extend those, put in 10, 10 storage containers, eight foot wide, 20 foot long on the east end of the property. I've already talked to the fire department on what they need for egress and ingress, what he's gonna require. So, I was just wondering if that is something that would work for the, be feasible for Monroe, because there is a demand for the storage units to expand in Monroe along with RV storage. And that's what I'd like to.
I have a question on one thing too, when I was looking through, because now in commercial zoning district, storage is not listed as an allowed use. But when I was like, asking about history, it was at one point. When I look at the section talking about non-conforming uses and the way it's worded, it can imply that any increase in storage units is increasing the degree of non-conformity. That's a part where I don't know how, like, in the past, how city of Monroe has looked at non-conforming uses and how they've applied that provision. I was looking for some definitions that kind tie in, like, for storage container or whatnot, and which structure, and it's, it's really in the gray. It's like, and then when you add in the river overlay that isn't, that, in the code that's online, it's not listed. It like, it has the older code, so I don't have the part with, I mean, I found the board. It's for the highway corridor overlay, which has the design criteria. And then, but then couldn't find the ordinance on the river overlay when I was kinda researching myself this afternoon. But those could have implications on content use. And then, with the other piece of that property would be, like, the proposal of adding a mobile home. And then with that notice on the condition, and I'll talk about that more, again, the report, trying to see how those tie together, and then what does that do with the non-conforming? Because then with the overlay, it looks like now you have a mixed use of that. Does, it's like, how does that play with the non-conformity? That's the part that I need to see a little bit more before I can, I can make that discussion. But I think it's worth enough to schedule pre-application meetings on any potential barriers and, and process. Because at a minimum, it's gonna need a go-through site review, because any change in law coverage in a commercial zone requires in the code.
Okay. All right. Well, hopefully, we can. That's probably gonna be something that we need to bring to city council, to planning and city council, to make sure that we have a code that covers or allows or.
Well, they have the new building code for the storage containers to be, or shipping containers to be used for storage on a commercial property. And it just came down, I think, what, what was that, Michael, like October or something we found? I think it was, we talked about.
Like from, and I'll, I'll check with.
Yeah, and I've talked to Benton. Yeah, and, uh, I've talked to Benton County and it is doable. It's just you guys, I need to an A, either a no or okay, let's proceed, even though you have nothing.
Yeah, we're gonna have to obviously do some work on our end.
Yeah.
To make a final decision on that, obviously.
Because it looks like both overlays would apply to this property. So that's where it's like, I, well, I mean, I found the ordinance on one, so I have the general language. But that's the, the highway overlay is more designed, but then the river overlay, which is part of the river district master plan, that one has like some more like additive uses. So it's like trying to cut the overlays and then see does that change how it looks? And then the fact that the other property is gonna have a, a, at some point a residential property on there right now. If it's the mixed use criteria of that, does that change how we're looking at? So that's a question I don't have to solve yet.
And this is, this is just to start at the existing storage unit. So I'm not changing, you know, property lines or nothing on it. It's just to use the vacant property at the back of it.
Okay.
Um, along Fourth Street.
So I think that's something we can, that's something we can get working on and, uh, see if we can get you an answer in the very near future.
And then it's like, and do you have an updated development code that's different? Because the online one's not the most recent. Being, both of those overlays happened after like 2016 and 2017 respectively, if I've done my, my research correctly.
But I, I see, the river overlay replaced the highway overlay.
Okay.
So it was supposed to be replacing it and not in parallel.
Okay, that's why it looked like it was almost the same, same shape on it. Okay.
Um, when, when the, uh, the, the river master plan overlay was put in, it was supposed to be replacing that river overlay. And so you just work with the one.
Okay. And you didn't happen to know what, or, or, I mean, at some point, it's like, if anybody knows what the ordinance number on that, I can at least look at that because that should have the language that's gonna go into the development code.
We'll have to, we'll have to look, yeah, look at that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you guys, are you going to need a actual site plan or is this preliminary gonna be good enough?
We probably will.
Uh, yeah, at the point of like going to the site.
The commercial.
Side, but like for the pre-application meeting, once I get this one other piece hammered out, it's like, I think we'll be good to go with what you have. Because I kind of did little drawings of like the.
Right. I didn't know if they guys got all copies of it or.
Uh, I talked to, um, Gabby today and, um, she was gonna talk to Michael and, and see if we needed those for, for this meeting, but I don't, I don't, I guess.
Are we, they can get them to you. You guys can look at it later. So, okay.
There, any other public comments?
Um, real quick, I did not print those out. I was, um, informer that potentially not needed for this meeting, potentially may, potentially not.
Okay. All right. So, um, I don't know if we want to do Patrick first or go.
Why don't we, when Patrick's here, we can talk about the UGB fund.
Yep. So real briefly, I don't know, would you, did you check into where we're at with the UGB, uh, expansion or did you try? Find any paperwork at all?
That context, I, I have been looking at S B fifty thirty seven, the allowances. It's been a minute since I looked at it though, but I'm after like refresh myself on what the allowances are for it. But, yeah, Patrick's.
Yeah, you bet. So again, this is Patrick Wingard with, um, Department of Land Conservation Development, the state's land use agency. Lots to unpack on the urban growth boundary stuff. Um, we have a senate bill fifteen thirty seven that was passed until the twenty twenty four session. That has a bunch of land use stuff in it, including adjustments and things that, um, you may or may not be, um, looking at, but, um, they're part of the deal. But where, um, a lot of attention is these days on that senate bill is the one-time UGB addition. So city under twenty-five thousand population, you can, uh, potentially, uh, add a, uh, a, a site. It could be contiguous parcels of up to fifty net acres. So, uh, usually take like twenty percent of land out for public rights of ways, stormwater drainage easements, things like that. So it could be like a sixty acre, um, piece. But fifty net acres is what you, you could bring in. There's also a provision, um, in the senate bill where you could do fifteen net acres. And, um, that's a, a lower bar, if you will, to, um, do some analyses. So, um, I can help you find ordinances, by the way, on the, the river. I remember that river.
The riverside.
Yes, I remember that overlay, um, because i- in Oregon, uh, your zoning ordinance, your comprehensive plan is what we, uh, refer to as acknowledged, state acknowledged. So only the city council can amend it, acknowledge plan, and it can only be done by ordinance. And if you did it right, and I'm pretty sure you did, you would have sent us a notice. So we could be an interested party if you want to participate. So let me know if you're trying to track down, you know, the, those types of things. Um, but on the, on the senate bill fifteen thirty seven stuff, on the one-time UGB, um, amendment, I haven't done any work with Monroe, um, on to help answer this question of where and what property or how. But I'm more than happy. Michael, I'm more than happy to, um, I can answer questions right now on the fly or I can come back, um, in a month or two and, uh, provide more details. For example, if you, if you're looking at a number of potential sites, you know, how do you discern one from the other? Um, I can help with that. Um, and what the criteria are for, for meeting the, the rule, but I'll, I'll stop there. I have to answer your questions.
Quick, one quick thing, we'd, we'd already kind of thought of where would be the, the best okay, expansion. And, you know, our new Red Hills project over there that just finished up over there, over there by the grade school and that.
Okay.
There's, uh, I've got the area of land over there, about fifty-one acres or so, or, uh, just on the other side of Red Hills, right there along, uh, south of Toon.
Okay.
Um, and orchard over there, um, back behind there. That's, it makes more sense from a, uh, standpoint of, of public works.
Um, that's, yeah, that's.
That's, uh, wetlands, a lot of, there's a lot of factors that make that a, uh, a better use of the city's uh, expansion.
Okay.
Um, originally, we, we thought about, you know, doing a land swap between the, the old brickyard and stuff. But, um, because our, our buildable land inventory is flawed because of how much wetlands, we actually got plugged into the buildable land inventory.
You can fix that.
Yeah.
We, I can work with your planner to fix that. That's a common issue and I've taken that on, um, to help cities. Philomath, you did it. You adopted, um, a, a, a buildable lands inventory that reflected the, the, the constraints of wetlands. It's taken the state a little while to come around, um, on that issue, I will admit. Uh, but we can, we can help reconcile your buildable lands inventory in regard to wetlands.
Because, but basically what had been, we'd been told, the planning commission, there was, it was already in the works to do this.
Okay.
UGB swap, but we do not know where it's at.
Okay.
Steve was working with the county planner. I remember him reporting to us and not in our meetings. Um, I can't remember what her name, I think it was a woman.
Benton County Planner, woman?
I think so. That had come here, remember the, that work session that you guys had where the county planners came?
Yeah, she, uh.
And there was a, there was a counterpart or something that Steve made a connection with.
Anna, there was a state and a county.
I think she was actually the count, I think she's on the Benton County Planning Commission.
Yeah, okay. And that was, and so, and he had, he, his report was that there was a process underway, but not indicated what that, where that was.
We need to.
And can you share with me the?
There's already some headway there.
The name of the property owner?
Uh, they're actually sitting.
Okay. Um, guys want to like be able to locate the property or an address or some way for me to find it on that. Are you Mr. Stone? All right. I do have some backstory on this property then. Okay, great, great. Yes. Okay, I, nobody got in touch with me. Uh, but that's okay. I mean, we can hit the ground running. We've got somebody on staff who's assigned to these one-time UGB deals. Um, I mean, I, I'm available as early as tomorrow or Friday or, you know, next week, um, to get working on this. I mean, this is, this is timely stuff, especially if you have a property owner who, you know, wants to collaborate with you all. Um, you know, let's, let's go through the, the criteria. I think you will be eligible. I don't think you've expanded your, your UGB in the last twenty years for residential lands, but there's some, there's some like issues that we have to make sure aren't present. And then I can provide you some guidance on the fifty acre net or the fifteen acre net if it's not.
Um, it's, it's big, like he said, it's more in the fifty range.
Yeah, it's, it's right, it's more in the fifty, fifty-one.
And it's zoned currently rural residential, right? Which is great. That's, that usually kills these plans because it's zoned EFU or it's zoned forest. If it's zoned what we call exception lands, then it's queued up very nicely. Yeah.
So my, my essential, I don't believe, we discussed it extensively at these meetings, but I don't believe anything actually got initiated. And so it'd be a good time to look into that. And, and I guess as I read through this, this, and I have not read, thank you for sending this on. You can allow us to kind of do some background. Um, but there's, there's some comp, are the landowners aware of the requirements to meet this? Because it requires the landowners to submit quite a bit of information as well.
So there's some parks in there, there's some women come housing.
Right. I know, uh, it's quite a long list of requiring, you know, expectations, I guess, of the property as well. So all those would have to be clearly understood, I think.
Yeah. I believe she brought the information to the former city administrator. So. Monroe's population is so low that I would offer tho- those aren't tough to me. Big cities, they are like, you have pride, twenty-four units per acre, you're five units per acre. You, you'd have to show as a minimum. I doubt you would want to develop anything like less than that. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if you wouldn't be looking at, you know, bringing in a variety of housing options that, that would, um, tick the needle upward as far, as far as um, number of units and types of units. But, uh, but you're, you're exactly right. Um, planning commissioner, there, there are, um, like a half a dozen standards that we want to make sure out of the gates that we're not, um, it's a non-starter. Yeah, thank you.
So to, to launch this, I guess, if, if it hasn't been launched, it, do we start with the county or do we start with state?
I think you should start with me.
Okay.
I, I think that, um, Mr. Stone's already reached out to me, gave me some good background. I was kind of hoping this was the property. But I wa- I wasn't gonna assume anything. Um, so I, I think either from the mayor or from a planning commissioner, from your staff, um, workman, somebody should say, hey, we're interested in moving this property forward on our senate bill fifteen thirty seven.
So we're interested in moving this forward with Senate Bill fifty.
And, and, and that really is enough. I will get in touch with our U, UGB specialist tomorrow. Um, let them know that we have a potential candidate here, um, in Monroe. And, uh, I mean, it won't be very long for us to know yay or nay. Um, if there's any fatal flaws, I don't think there are. I did a little research thinking that this might be the property y'all are interested in. Um, and it looks pretty good. Um, but let's make sure of that. So then we can, we can hit the ground running. And what I'll do is, um, her name is Karen. Um, she's from Costa Rica and she's, um, very detail oriented, but she's our UGB specialist. Um, her name is Karen Guillen, um, Cortez. But I will get in touch with Karen tomorrow. Let her know that, um, you guys have, uh, interest in, in moving the ball forward. And then I will be able to guide you through the process. Like, okay, we checked that box. You've made it to this step. Now, next we need the concept development plan. Next we need the development agreement with the city. Next we need. And we can just, just check those boxes. And, um, I think you should work through me. The county, uh, will have a role, but I think the, the statute reads county shale approve if the city has all its ducks in a row. So appreciate you reached out to Benton County. Um, I was in a meeting with Benton County today. They're going through some long-range planning stuff that I won't talk about at this meeting, but in the future for Philomath in Monroe and, uh, there, um, there's some stuff that the county's cooking up. It's gonna involve you, you all at some point. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I've got great relationships with, with the county folks. But I really think this is a city-state thing that we should, um, we should, um, make operable and, you know, and, and, and get it rolling.
And when it comes to the pre, like, when everything looks ready for a pre-application meeting to start the UGB annexation zoning, it's like, would it be you that we should invite to the, that a meeting for like some of the stuff or would it be, um, Karen maybe?
Yeah, yeah. It, it would, it, for that, like if, if the city wants or your code requires a pre-app, then yeah, I think I would, it's spelled Karen, but it spells Cotton. Um, I would, I would reach out to Cotton and ask her if she wanted to either participate remotely or come here in person. Um, but I will make sure that I'm up to speed. I'll make sure that I don't have to rely on somebody else in the department to answer your questions. Um, cause I'm pretty knowledgeable on this UGB stuff, even though this is new, um, should be easier. Shouldn't be the, the same level of, uh, rigor that we typically see in UGB amendment. So, which is, which is good. We need that. And, um, I'm really pleased that you all are already communicating and, and, um, yeah, I, I, I think those are, those are my thoughts. I'm pretty excited about it, I will say.
Cool. We're excited too.
All right. No pressure, Michael.
It looks like, uh, when I look at these three sections, the, the land use adjustment, um, potential, the new bill has a huge section that could, if we're on, not quite clear of all of our codes now, those, I mean, so we may be coming back to you. And it looks like that could be another place just for the planning commission to be aware of. It could be requested for us to start changing some of those as well. And we would need some assistance understanding how that section works. Because that looks pretty interesting as we, uh, kind of go forward.
Yes.
Impacts the overlay and how it impacts, um, development in the city.
Yes.
I don't quite understand.
Commissioner, you're, you're right. That is a very interesting section. Um, Mr. Workman, I'm kind of curious. Um, maybe if you've done anything with the, the, they're compulsory. I mean, as cities, you're, you're obliged to, um, approve these adjustments. I don't know if every city is even knowledgeable. And our communications now are going to the development community, to developers, like saying, hey, you know, be aware. Because, um, if a, a city is caught off guard and isn't aware of these adjustments. And I think we could have a, another session just on adjustments. Yeah, I, I think we could just talk about those when they're applicable, when they're not. And the big question is, do you want to put adjustments in your code? They sunset in twenty thirty-one. Um, Cottage Grove is moving forward, uh, codifying the adjustments. They didn't want to be bouncing back and forth. So they're deciding they're gonna go ahead and put them in the, in the, um, code. So that is something that cities need to decide is do you want to actually codify this stuff, put it on, on the books? Or do you want to just have your planner, you know, have a, a little sheet at the counter that is a reminder to everybody that, hey, when you have a residential development that meets certain thresholds, meets certain housing types, certain densities, um, you're obliged to forego a setback or forego an off-street parking requirement. I mean, and there's like forty different things that can be adjusted. It's, um, I'm curious, maybe after the meeting, Chris, you can share with me how the city managers are feeling about this because, um, you know, I've heard an earful, um, both, on both sides. And, um.
Well, your mic's not even on, Chris, so.
Like, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, thank you for bringing up the adjustments because I was prepared, um, at least to talk about them in, in a cursory fashion tonight. Because that's the other big ticket item on Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven, uh, in addition to the one-time UGB is, is these, these, um, compulsory adjustments.
We have plenty on our plate today. It, it's, it's good that, thankfully you're here because we will need help.
And, you know, hearing that you're, you're, you know, you're in between staff and, you know, I, I, I like Philomath's, you know, motto. We're, we're, we're never too busy to help. Isn't that your, your?
My personal motto.
That's your personal, I love that.
I'm a, I'm a justice.
Well, I, I, I would, I would offer to you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, uh, constituents, uh, property owners, residents, staff that, you know, I am here to serve you. I mean, I am placed based in the region because I know the region well. And, um, I can help you move things forward, um, a- adjust things, pivot when you need to. So, um, you just let me know what cadence you might like me to be, um, here. I mean, I could commit to, you know, once a month, that would be no problem.
That'd be awesome.
But sometimes, you know, state officials, we can wear out our welcome. So I don't, I don't want to assume that I'm, you know, wanted here. Cause I'm not always at every place and every instance, but, uh, in, in all seriousness, um, you know, you've, you've got the, the drainage issue, I mean, that was the, exactly the issue. The first thing I was introduced to in, in Monroe was where the springs coming down off the hill and, um, what are we gonna do about that? And, um, so everything from, you know, your public works situation here, your wetlands, you know, how much water, the long time, your, um, your dam. You know, all the stuff that you, you're contending with here, in addition to the pressure the state's putting on you to build housing. I mean, it's, it's least I could do is be here and help answer questions.
I don't want to complicate anything, but, uh, there was one other topic that we had discussed in prior meetings. Whenever we were discussing the stone property and the idea of expanding the urban growth boundary, um, is the issue with, uh, access to those properties. And so one thing, and Linda's nodding her head, that we discussed was the potential of reaching out to the county. To talk about uh, extending Coon Road all the way down to territorial, which would allow access to. All of those properties from the south, including the elementary school, which doesn't currently have. Um, other, you know, fire access. Um, so each, this applies to that, to that, that. Long narrow properties between the school and the Sanian, the Red Hills. So all of those properties would benefit from some sort of access, but that's a outside of the city and account would be a county road.
I see.
But also, Coon Road is a, like, a dead man's curve, crazy.
Where is Coon Road? I see fifth mill.
And then it takes a little.
There's an S curve right there. West out of town. It turns into, it turns from Orchard into Coon right there on those S curves.
Basically.
I'm at the, I'm looking at the school, I'm in the wrong part of town, okay.
Basically, the, um, that's a, that's a crazy curve already. It also brings a lot of traffic that's traveling way too fast whenever it comes into Orchard. So there's a lot of concerns about that particular traffic pattern. And um, whatever the process is, and I don't know if it's, if it's rolled into this whole uh, development.
Yeah.
Concept for that, but it's, but it is, it's part, you know, it's hand in hand with it, I think.
Absolutely. Yes, this will, I'm assuming the urban growth boundary, it runs up the, the west side of tenth. The stone properties right there. You've got Coon Road that comes in, yeah, okay. Um, the county, the county will definitely have. Um, have to be at the table and um.
And it splits right through property line. There's a property line that goes right, a fence line that goes right along there directly. Along that piece right into the, into that other artery. So there's another. That's a, something that, to discuss, and it seems like it would benefit the city.
So this is where the, the net acres, gross acres could come in to play. The, the state is very particular, Chris, you know this, very, we're very particular. About counties managing county roads and cities managing city roads, and cities can't plan for county roads. Like, City of Coburg would very much like to do something about the freight traffic coming into Coburg from Harrisburg and, and those, but there's only so much. Coburg reached out to Lane County, Lane County's gonna do a study. So in this case, as the jurisdiction may transfer on the stone property from county to city. We'll want to make sure, you'll want to make sure that the roads come, that need to serve that property are urbanized. We um, we missed that on a Coburg U G B amendment a couple of years ago. I still feel bad about it. We uh. Left out Van Dine Road, and the county had to come in later and, and do a, a, a bit of a annexation and, and anyway.
And there's wetlands too, there too.
There's always wetlands, right? Always wetlands. Yes. Um, so that's, no, 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 that's, that's all I want to say is, it's great you're thinking about the road situation. Because that is appropriate to be thinking about at this stage.
But to meet your complication, raise it one, um, I think we do have to kind of revisit the whole water a- as we look at. At new developments too, just um. To take a little bit of time to make sure we have enough water to meet the growth that we need, um, not, not to have much great trouble. If we had fifty or sixty homes. It's out there already. So we need to better understand.
It's a public works conversation.
We have to bring that into our planning commission concepts as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, but supplementally, as I've worked on, on annexation for Philomath, it's like. In that staff report of findings for an annexation that goes before planning commission, city council. It's like we have a, a breakout of like, here's the water, how much water, and then, and, and a formula of how many um. Like, how many people on a single lot, like, what's the assumption, and then how much consumption that is to. To figure out whether there's enough water, whether there's enough sewer water capacity, enough stormwater capacity to do that. So. That'll be numbers I'll have to, and I assume I'll have to reach out to Chuck for some of that, that he would have some of those numbers and. And then be able to incorporate that into it, so that at least there's an assessment of whether there's enough of those utilities under, under the current build.
Right, or we have to build up to that.
Yeah.
I have talked to Chuck about it a little bit. We haven't gone into detail. Um, the bigger question is the sewer, um, sounds like if. We get too much more, we're gonna be looking at adding another lift station and things like that. Um, which is doable. I don't know if that would be on us, if that would be on the, the developer, whatnot, that's what I have to learn a bit to. Um, the water side of the house, that's more of a, we can make the water, we're just gonna be running a lot longer. So we'd have to get hiring another staff member on two sets, uh, two shifts in that water. Right, to accommodate the water usage.
Yeah, just from the planning commission, we have to be kind of aware of what that looks like and when the city is able, in that position to hire and. Those, those are all closely kind of tied together.
All right, one quick procedural question for, for Patrick. Um, for municipalities, like in their process of updating their code, but it's not finalized yet, or in the case of Monroe. Is there any opposition from the state, like, having an application process if they decide they want to invoke S B fifteen thirty seven? To have that application to be, like, for the site design, site plan review and all that stuff to, for approval. In lieu of the ordinary application, as long as it's like the same, like, not, not a different cost, but saying that they're doing an S B fifteen thirty seven application.
Yes, um, we want to be careful, there are um. Provisions built into this rule that really um, tie a city's hands in um. Doing anything that would increase cost or time or delay, even to the point where if an appeal. Were received and it were determined to be frivolous, that the appellant would be responsible to pay for the city's um, attorney fees to defend. Or the property owner to defend. So let's, let, let me answer that with the, with the statute in front of me. Or the, or the legislation in front of me. Um, I don't think. It, it's totally doable, totally doable. Um, you absolutely can run your, your process um, at the local level. Um, as your code would, would dictate, or as you would desire, I can let you know that, hey. Um, you know, the, the rules are gonna want you to, to get this done within thirty days instead of a hundred twenty days, or. There's some expedited things that are in there that I'm not altogether familiar with, but totally doable. That you have your, your city process and, and you make sure that, you know, you're, you're timely and you're expeditious. But you also are including your planning commissioners and, and neighboring property owners, you know, and. Um, it, it wouldn't be run exactly like a post acknowledgement plan amendment. Or, or a public hearing of land use activity that requires multiple public hearings, but it would definitely be analogous. There would definitely be similarities.
Because I'm like, when I read through the, the bill, it seemed like everything would be a type two or less.
Right.
So, like, from a Philomath context, there wouldn't be planning commission involved. It would just be a monthly report of what, what got passed.
Yeah.
Versus like in, for Monroe.
Right.
It's like, where it's like the planner, that still presents that to the um, planning commission, but it's not a public hearing, but it's just. A review by the planning commission to determine whether they agree with the findings.
Exactly, Michael. And, and one of the things that I think um, Monroe, any city would benefit from going through this process. I saw in your, your city goals, you know, streamlining, less bureaucracy, you know, this is an opportunity to maybe do some of that. See if, you know, you're able to expedite uh, as opposed to doing a type three procedure, which would be, you know, hearings before the planning commission. You do a type two procedure, which is an administrative review and notice to, to joining property owners. Um, you know, you, you can see if that's, you know, palatable. Your population is under twenty-five hundred here, so you have quite a bit of discretion on how you um, you operate. Philomath, not so much, and then large, like Corvallis, forget about it. They are, they're absolutely like tied to having to do certain things. A certain way. Um, so you still have some flexibility because of, of your population size, but there are some things that we'll want to pay attention to. Um, as you, as you work through your process.
Be good to know on that, because we haven't had anyone even approach us with S B fifteen thirty seven or anything along those lines. So it's like, it's been normal.
Yeah, a- and for any, any of the cities that you serve, you can really pass those questions straight on to me. And um, I will get you a timely response.
But those raises, we're trying to move more and more into administrative review to speed up processes. But now I guess the question would be, who, who, who do we have that can? Not right now. We have to decide who can do administrative review at this point, because we don't have anybody that can do that right now. Must be a planner. So as we move into that role, and right now we don't have me to do the administrative. We're kind, and we still want to be timely. It's kind of a bit of a dilemma.
That's kind of the purpose of this meeting tonight, too, is, is where we're at and. What direction helped, right, the mayor with, the city council with.
Council.
As far as, as far as what's needed and how to accomplish it.
And with looking at the existing code and how it's written and what kind of parameters to have to abide by. It's like how, like, how I see like Monroe would do. It's like, once I deem an application complete, get the notice ready, work with the. Um, city clerk um, to get that out and, and the notice noter, like, notarize that, David, of a notice being sent. Get the staff report findings and then make sure that that staff report's in that two weeks from, or just after that two weeks to be able. To then have that review and then determine whether it's the same and then get the decision rendered. I think that's the only way. I mean, it's gonna be a lot more work on me, because I'll be the one writing the staff report findings, but I think that's the only way. Like, in the timeliness, that's an S B thirty seven, would have to be that approach and just be really like on the, on point that even may need to be more. A truncated staff report, as long as it's enough detail to show that it's meeting the criteria.
Okay, and I can, I can offer my direct services. I've worked in many building and planning departments, city and county. Like, for instance, Chris, if, if you're here, Michael, you're here, and um, if I could give you a hand, like. Going through your application forms or just trying to help your city clerk, just, just let me know, like, you just, you, 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 you want help. Um, your, your clerk just needs some basic understanding on how to accept an application. Um, let me know, because I will physically come here and like. Hang out in your city hall and, and help you, you know, go through your. You've got good pizza in town. So, yes.
Okay, we might take you up on it.
But not necessary, but, but yes.
All right, sir. All right, Michael, you want to?
All right, let's dive in on my updates as I've gone through everything and see if, in the sliding, if I can read my own handwriting. Because I have spots from coming in and, and when you have progressive ones.
You're in the dark.
Yeah, there's another light out my.
Is there even another light?
There is, it's just the switches somewhere. Oh, that is odd. I didn't even see that switch. No wonder. No, no, no.
Maybe not.
Do you want to swap?
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's swap. I think that'll be.
I was gonna say, you're kind of sitting in the dark.
Yeah, I was using a flashlight on my phone and if I.
Oh, that's much better.
Okay, I can read that.
All right. So I kind of went through the entire spreadsheet and then trying to see, it's like, what, what were the next steps? If there's anything I'm missing or any information I'm missing to be able to proceed. And so I'm just gonna kind of. Go down the spreadsheet that was given to me and what's needed, what's not needed at this point, or what I, the unknowns that I have. Um, the first one was on the Rose S D C, and I had talked with Dawn on that, it's like, and still trying to determine. Um, what S D Cs are paid and confirm what is still owed. There was a document and they're kind of like a payment installment over it, but. It's like that was based on a presumption of how much was paid, so um, Dawn's kind of has started some looking into that, but I think I kind of need to know. What the updated S, like the S D C fee table to see if it matches the document that's in there. Because S D Cs are not, that's more Chris's bailiwick, and I kind of like periphery on the side. I can read like what the fee tables are, but. In the administration on that, it's a little bit different and kind of the, and then all, towards the end, remind me, I'll have a question on like the way. Monroe collects S D C fees in the permitting process and, because I want to get understanding on one more piece, but we'll get to that in the end. Um, the other property, and I always mispronounce it.
Don't even know how to pronounce it.
The Shemexanon, and I'm totally mispronouncing it. Um, Chuck was on vacation leave, so I need to ask about that because the easement, because they had an easement removed. Um, off of those properties, and it is recorded with Benton County, so I need to see. Now that the, it's recorded that that easement, that easement is gone, does that change the issue of whether it was like, it was deemed illegal for them to. Put the water and sewer lines onto those properties because it's going across public property to get to private. That was like, from my understanding, what stopped it. So I need to find out if that easement thing removed resolves the problem, but until Chuck is back, I, I won't have any more information on that. So I'll, I'm gonna put a note to myself next week when I'm working remotely um, during bereavement leave. Um, if, if he had more information and, and get him a copy, because I saved the recorded document, so I can, I can access it that way. Um, let's see, Brickyard, um, when I looked through that, it looks like there's two different site plans. But they did include a soils report, which was, which was an interesting soils report that it's definitely, based on their findings, I mean, it's a pretty clean brownfield site. Um, it, from what I can see, it looks like where I'm at right now is. Introduce myself and schedule a pre-app meeting and see if they have any um, proposed utility drawings or anything like that to bring in fire. Um, Public Works and, and Benton County, because it's gonna be a large enough site that Benton County's gonna have something to say with respect to stormwater. On that and kind of like stormwater detention, some of those requirements. Um, so it looks like that one's pretty much ready to go, and I just need to reach out to them.
A question about that, um, because I never, we never saw a second one, or I didn't. Um, I did, uh, the mayor did flash it at the city council meeting, but I hadn't, but um, that. So is that something that we could look at or something?
I mean, I, I didn't bring it with me. I was like.
We, we had a couple of, can, couple of concerns about the previous one, which was um. There wasn't a mix of commercial and resi- residential. Um, so, and I don't, I don't know if they've, they've rectified.
So what they did along the side, and this was the difference, like, the first one didn't spell it out as much, but the second one, which was in color, did, and was like smaller. I had to really zoom in because like, I had bad eyesight, so it was like, it was a little hard to read, but looks like. How they're reconciling it is the townhome portion is gonna have a live-work space, so it meets the live-work requirement for the overlay. And then the, the other parts manufactured homes, which doesn't have the work component, so it's a, it's a quasi, I would call it a quasi-mixed use, but not fully. But live-work is, and the overlay and additive looks like it is an approved use from, from the information I've saw. As I, like, parsing through various documents on the website um, with respect to that overlay. But I think that's more of a consideration, because at the pre-application meeting side, you, you can discuss that this needs to be flushed out more. So I mean, that input will be much needed if, if it's deemed for, like, the intention of that overlay district to. Have a little more of a commercial component than live-work. I think that can be at the table, and that would be something appropriate to bring up in, in a pre-application meeting.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that's something that we have, we've been talking about from meeting to meeting was the fact that. We really need more uh, commercial space for actual businesses. For instance. That area up there would be, they talked about a small grocery store. That's the, I mean, that's not gonna be handled by a bunch of.
Yeah.
Uh, live-work spaces or something.
Yeah, and I didn't see anything on that secondary footprint that showed a, a separate commercial building, at least personally. I might have missed something, but I think. I think the only change in the concept.
For the developers to really be thinking about, as opposed to stuffing.
Yeah.
With, with every, with every possible residence they could possibly.
Yeah.
Shoehorn in there.
Yeah, it's like, and I've got.
Also park space, there was another discussion about a seven.
Like they plugged one in in the second drawing.
Yeah, I think there was a.
There was a space in the middle of it. And I don't, I didn't know what it was. It's very crude. It's not a detailed drawing.
And, and that's the important, like, and pre-application means as you do that, you kind of flush out, like, like, get them to understand the intent of, like, in this case, an overlay district. Intent of the commercial district and make sure that they're meeting the intent of the allowed uses and everything, and then. Kind of can go, like, go from there, because sometimes when you get some of these proposals, like, they have mostly right, but there's something to get it into conformity. And that's where you can, you can have those discussions and, and I think, and that's kind of brings up the next part as we, as I start. When things look ready for a pre-application meeting, w- 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 like, would, like, the, the chair of the planning commission be one of the people in the meeting or like?
I was just about to ask if we can have planning commissioners there, if you're okay with that.
And I'm, and it's like, and I'm trying to think procedural on the rules, it's like, because I, and, and I need, I'm not versed on this in order, making. Like, if one person has more information than the other pre-app meeting, that's that, you can ca- trigger any ex parte um, kind of considerations.
Good point.
Just, we're talking to Brickyard area, right? The last time, with the last planning commission, there was like a hundred and forty-four homes. The density was really high.
They changed it to one twenty-two on the second.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and you're just like, yeah, we're, we're, our vision is really. And 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 you're just like, yeah, we're, we're, our vision is really, anything along ninety nine may, uh, you know, first there, we want. Uh, a commercial shop, retail, something. That's, that's our only, we don't have a lot of space here for that.
Yeah.
And that's really our only opportunity to provide that for the, the community.
Yeah, community is literally hungry for some specific businesses and we do not have commercial space that. Is available to them to encourage businesses like that to come into the, into the city. So we really need to discuss that.
Yeah.
And uh.
And that, and that's why I like need to see the, all the language in that river overlay because I know it's a little bit different because that's additive uses. To that to be able.
Um, also, I'd just uh, echo what John, uh, Commissioner Great Annis brought up um, earlier that. The size of this particular development would be a major and radical burden of on the, on the water system. So. This was, this would be like literally at the uh, without, there can't be really any discussion at all without. There already be serious plan in line for us to increase capacity. I know it takes a while for people to move in, but. Literally, that's way, way, way beyond the threshold, so.
It would be basically increasing our population by twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, that's just a color, potential color to add to your conversation.
Because like in those type of meetings where it's like, we're running up like waters, it's like, I'd make sure public works is there, fires there. It's like, so all those considerations because. I think that's the like, and and like in, in Fulham, if we do that same thing, just make sure it's like. We're not siloized and we're getting all the considerations that go beyond planning and making sure. That if there is an issue that the issue ends up getting addressed, so it doesn't get to where it's a no at the end, like almost at the end that we're. Flushing those issues out early. And so we're hoping to not delay, delay whatever progress down the road. That's kind of the um, approach that Chris has instilled in me and it's like, it's. And it seems that that works like in my experiences, worked pretty well and I don't know if Chris had any.
I'll just, I'll just add kind of as a general rule, you wanna. You wanna be a little careful with kind of some state land use regulations and maybe Patrick can chime in a little bit here too. If those I go out of line, but even in smaller communities, wanna be careful that any individual member of the planning commission doesn't have inside information. That other members of the planning commission don't have. And so I'd be very hesitant about holding a pre-application meeting. With an applicant like a member or two of the planning commission present. Cuz all those conversations that you have in that preapplication meeting, if it comes to the planning commission for a decision, need to be disclosed as. Um, ex parte contact. So you're essentially gonna regurgitate everything that you heard, discussed, learned about in the preapplication meeting. You're now personally liable to disclose all of that to the rest of the planning commission. So that they're aware of the inside information that you got while you sat in a preapplication meeting. So one of the benefits of having staff. Now is, is there's a balance, right? There's certain things that you do want your staff to do because it's one, it's gonna insulate. You from that liability of knowing more than everybody else knows. It's also gonna allow your staff to do a lot of this background more efficiently and get the information and check the code and check the application and all that. And then when they have that preapplication meeting, they're gonna come to that with some knowledge and information that they could pass on the applicant. And you really don't wanna know a whole lot more about that until an application has been submitted and we're ready to come in front of the planning commission. With the information that's been provided. And at that time, then everyone on the planning commission is dealing with the same information and you can make a. Decision that's gonna have standing and not get challenged by an applicant who says, well. I think you had inside information cuz you knew more than everybody else did or or the other way around. This planning commissioner wasn't at the preapplication meeting. They weren't as informed. They voted inappropriately, vice versa. So. I, I'm looking long-term, big picture. You wanna be careful that any decision you make at the planning commission and even at the city council level. Is gonna have standing, which means it's gonna be backed up if you ever get challenged. Um, on a land use decision, which never happens, right? But um, when these land use decisions do get challenged, so one of the first things they're gonna look at is the. Ex parte contacts, any bias um, on the land use, any um, conflicts of interest, potential conflicts of interest. So. Don't wanna get too technical and lawyer-y on you, but it is something to be careful about, even in a small community and getting too involved in the. Pre-application process. And right now, we're getting a planner up to speed. And so our meeting. Last Friday, more than appropriate, keeping you up to date on how things are going as appropriate. Any of those updates that your planner is sending out to you needs to be to you as a body, right? To the planning commission. Not to just the chair, not to just the mayor. It needs to go to the body to make sure that everybody's getting the same information from the staff. As everybody else. And that's just protecting yourselves and it's gonna hold the integrity of that decision when it gets made. Does that make sense? So again, right now we're transitioning a little bit. There's some information that individuals have that Michael needs to get, getting up to speed on all those, but. The focus should be on, we need to allow Michael to try to do as much of that. Initial meeting, initial information, here's the application, here's the process, let's schedule a meeting, come in, we'll talk with. Fire, we'll talk with, you know, Benton County Planning if we need to, we'll bring in the engineer if we have to, the planner is gonna be there. That's that great initial first meeting where we get everything on the table. And and really to have a planning commission there, I, I would just fair tread very lightly there and maybe talk to a lawyer if we need to for the city on.
Thank you very much. Like I said, we don't know what we don't know. And uh, and and that makes a ton of sense.
I do have a.
We need to trust our, we need to trust our planner. We just need to make sure we have communicated all the information we have to help him.
On that point, I'm just wondering something that we have not done in the past, but would also be nice in terms of like, holding. Knowledge or something. Is there any practice for using Basecamp or some kind of extranet technique that where. The members of the committee could all see discussion or or shared document access? Is that something that you guys do?
You start running into trouble with public records or public meeting laws when you start having shared. Online resources, if it's set up and where does any discussion can take place or even thumbs ups or. Uh, you know, anything short of, let's talk about this at the next meeting. Becomes a little bit inappropriate cuz the public's not there as part of that, that discussion. And it doesn't have to be that everybody's on there at the same time. It could be. You say something tomorrow and you agree with it the next day and somebody else disagrees the day after. You've got a serial meeting going on that's not in the eyes of the public. Like this meeting is very much in the eyes of the public, right? So. Um, so I'm always learning about those, but for, to request that Michael, at the end of each day, spends fifteen, twenty minutes and sends an email out to the. Planning Commission. Here's what got accomplished today. Who was I talked to? Here's where I'm at on this. Here's where I'm at on that. He's got a pretty good Excel spreadsheet that got given to him when he first got here of all of what we thought were the open files. Be really quick for him to give an update status on all those and email it out to the planning commission. Just don't reply all, right? Just you read it, you take the input, everybody's got the information. And now when you come to the meeting, you're up to speed cuz you've kinda followed along in the progress that Michael's made with those applications. But there was no public meeting, there was no discussion outside of quorum. None of that took place, right? It's very, very above board. And again, it's gonna hold the integrity of those. Decisions that get made.
Makes sense.
So, so in the event he did that, to, to his point, you don't reply back with a question. You basically just absorb the information and. If you have questions, they happen in the meeting.
Got it.
Yeah, you can, you can ask a question to your staff. You can always ask a question to the planner, but the planner is not gonna say. You know, so and so had this question, they had this question, this was my, there's no conversation other than, hey, Michael, I got a question about this one. Could you fill me in? He can give you a little bit of insight there, but it shouldn't be anything more than what everybody else knows. So clarification, okay. If, you know, if Michael feels like that's a good question, I didn't cover that, he should send an email to everybody and say, hey, I got a question from. Planning Commissioner so and so, here's my response, blah, 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 blah. And everybody gets the information. So. You know, staff, get trained on public laws, public records, public meetings. So we'll be able to help with that a little bit. I just wanna make sure that we're not putting Michael in a situation where he's like. Yeah.
And then the thing I, the other thing I can do is as we get more systematic on everything, it's like provide a summary. Of what's been done or or what actions are coming up because that, that can be put in a, a planning agenda or whatnot. And then. If it's too late for that, at least send the email with a status update. And it's like, so between those two things, I think that will provide. All the information that's gonna be timely and then, then, and then at the meeting, if there's any questions then. Like that are go beyond what the scope of that, I think that, and then that becomes the appropriate.
And sure, I do recognize, I know one of the concerns that you'd said about how things are on, so a lot of stuff's happened, you guys didn't know about it. And so. There's definitely a balance of having you involved at every meeting and whenever you can be there, you're involved and 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 all that versus. Uh, a staff that's never reaching back out and keeping you informed on what's going on and what they're doing. And so. You know, there's a little bit of trust that goes there that, yeah, stuff's happening that you're not involved in, but you're gonna know about. What you need to know about what's happening there so that you're not in the dark and we're not in a spot where, you know, sometimes Michael wins the lottery and he bells on all of us. Nobody has an idea what's going on. You're gonna go back to last week's report and you're gonna know as much as everybody did, right? So. I think the reporting to you is gonna be important, but um, you know, it's not something that I would feel like you're gonna need to be like in the day to day of what's going on.
I agree. I think, I think the concern we had is. We, we, we've felt there was a lot of things happening that were actually never happening.
Right.
And then that put us in the, the city potentially in a huge.
That's called a false report.
Fiction.
We, um, I think we have, unfortunately, I think we have some of that, but anyway.
And that was why my first four hours I was here, I went through the entire code and I put everything in cat, procedural category boxes. So in a half page of notes, so I know what procedure needs to be followed on which application type. And so we got everything compartmentalized, what needs a pre-op meeting and. Have my little matrix in Word form that I'll, I'll be using so that, because I want, I was a triage kind of situation is how I approached it. So I needed to get to the. Most important, what's the process? Um, and so following on the list, uh, Station four, five, six, and I hope I wrote that for some reason in my head that sounds wrong.
I think it was called tumbleweed there.
Yeah, now it's tumbleweed. There, there were still some questions on like, um, like for the food trucks, was that part of the. Um, pri- prior uh, planning commission approval, but I also need to see it's like what was approved. And whether it's like, it still needs to go through a site plan review because everything they provided was internal and nothing external. So it's like in a site plan review, I kinda wanna see. See both because it's kinda like hand drawings. On both. It wasn't, it wasn't, it was not uh, explicit um, uh, to scale drawings or anything. I, I think it was.
She, she drew them and she presented and we. And we agreed with the concept that it was, looked like a great idea would fit in with. The overlay and what, what the vision of the city had. So that was kind of the only thing we had in that.
They go to the next step. So that I note to myself that needs a contact for a pre-op meeting and then to see if they can come up with a external. Site plan for parking and things like that.
And we did, we did create ordinances for food trucks that went through.
Oh, okay.
It should be, whether again, it got into code anywhere, I don't know, but we did review.
Yeah, and each municipality is a little bit different. Sometimes they add it as a use or it's a separate ordinance. I know. Like Fulham had kinda had more of a hands-off, but there's some Benton County guidance that there's very specific protocol they have to go by. So if a pickup restaurant, for example, is that from a planning perspective, that's like a takeout restaurant and a food truck. Functionally are the same thing. So it's like one just using a food truck versus you're in a, a brick and mortar and you're, you're picking up your order. It, it functionally is the same. So that's how like from my experience, how I've applied that, if it's not explicitly listed as a use in planning code. It between that and then having a like, and then some places just have an establishment, like restaurant establishment and not separate out pick, takeout versus dine in. But some do, but it functionally, it still is the same in that food, food use. If it's allowed in that zoning district, then the food truck would also. Um, um, tangentially be allowed. And then, so, so on Station four, five, six, I will follow up to get a pre-op meeting schedule and see if she can. Provide me a drawing on kind of the external, see if, are there gonna be changes to parking and anything external and then. Because if it's a big enough redevelopment, it's like, is landscaping gonna be part of what, so those are the things that still need to be hammered out, but that could be. Hammered out in the pre-application meeting. So. I will have it circled that I will follow up with her and be able to do that and. And then, yeah, it's like I realized it's on the spreadsheet and I'll have it with me, so I might take a photo of it so I could deal with that next week. Um, and then the next one was Oaks. Um, I saw that the partition was approved back in twenty twenty four. I. Haven't had yet been gone onto the Benton County G I S to see if, um, because usually when they're recorded, I can, I can pull it up like in the. Tax lot survey and then be able to see if it's been, if it's recorded, it should show up in their G I S. So I haven't checked that yet. And then I saw that there's a filled out site plan review approved in twenty twenty three, but I only see the info for it. But it looks like the partition decision was on February twenty seventh of twenty twenty five. So I'm just trying to figure out if it's gonna need a new. Site plan review because the partition was just now approved and we might have to wait for it to be recorded. That, that was because since it's a five. Splitting the partition becoming five lots. I, it's like, until it's recorded, I don't know if there's any a site plan they can really uh, bring yet because it's not beneficially. Recorded with the county if it's not there. So. That's kinda, so I need to see if it's recorded and then if it is, then they would be ready for, it looks like a site plan review. Were they doing curb and gutter for their, for their uh?
Uh, that was something that we, I don't think we had got that far. We just basically approved the partitions because. It was because of the size of the lot was the issue for him wanting to do five and that sliver of city land. That he was gonna need to use to, for his road access on, of its sixth.
No, we say, yeah, there was a question of whether or not that should be opened up.
The Depot Street pulling, um, coming to that.
Depot is, yeah, yeah, he's got, so he has a, he has, he got that approved by. But there was the other idea of having six connect to pine for additional uh, fire access.
Right.
Yeah, and that's the other thing I need to check and out and uh, that one will be a record search if we don't have a copy of the. Recorded um, Massaraba property access agreement. If we don't have a copy of it recorded, then I'll have to request from Benton County of assuming. That it's been um, recorded at Benton County.
It's, you know, you could not find that in the. The office here anymore.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see a signed.
The shared drive's been down, so we're hoping to have it back up, I think tomorrow. Good, so.
Okay, next on the list is Mill Creek and well, I believe that one's Surge One, if I remember right. To me, it looks like that's gonna need a rezone because it's an industrial right now and it's gonna be a residential commercial.
The loving field.
So if it, if that's the case, then we're gonna have to do a pre-op meeting, but we're also gonna have to do um, um, D L C D thirty five day notice. So wants to get access to that for that then, and it seems like we got the green light that they're about to do application at least thirty five days before the first hearing. I will need to make sure I get that notice, the D L C D to make sure I'm compliant with state notification. But uh, let's see. And I think we've got enough to get like, be able to do the pre-op conversation from, from what drawings were submitted. But I still think there's some details that need to be hammered out to see with feasibility and everything too. So it, my next steps is gonna be, it looks like, well, I, there was contact information, so I just need to reach out um, to schedule. Pre-op meeting and then. Get a little more.
So in regards to that Mill Street one, I did talk to Serge last week, he gave me a call. Um, it sounds like there were some unexpected delays. Okay. That, um, I don't know if that one is as high on the priority list anymore.
Oh, okay.
Um, it sounded like there might be some legal action that might need to take place in regards to that property. I'm not one hundred percent sure. So I think his main focus right now is the North Age and all that, right?
Nor they have the surge, surge two, I guess that's surge two, yeah.
And I would, if, if you can, I would reach out to him.
Okay.
And see if you can get some more information on that, but that's what it sounded like when he called me last week.
Maybe switch those numbers.
Yeah.
Been around for years and years and years. Surge, surge one is brand new.
And that may help solve the other problem.
Yeah.
On North Eight.
And then, um, yeah, w- with what's quote unquote surge two on this, um. I see that there is a, a joint state um, federal wetlands permit um, application that was signed by the. Previous city administrator. I don't see an approval yet um, on that because if they, if it doesn't get approved, then the. Pre-op meeting might be premature on that, but if it has been approved, we, they, they would, they would truly have the green light to go, like whatever. See, I don't think we ever saw a big.
Been working on it for years.
But we, but the implication was from Steve that he'd seen something that was fairly. Uh, developed, it felt uh, fairly far along. That's why I was bringing that up in the context of the storm, storm.
Care of his credits, his wetland credits, he'd already done his purchases and he was all, he always had the green light supposedly. Care of his credits, his wetland credits, he'd already done his purchases and he was all, he always had the green light supposedly.
I'll just see if he has a copy of the approval. If we have a copy of approval, then.
And then I heard that he wanted to break ground in May. Is that still the case?
For a second.
That, that Serge wanted to break ground in May, was that still the, was that still the timeline?
Think that's been postponed as well.
Oh, really?
Based on what he was saying on the phone.
I see.
Because I noticed.
Sure how far, but it sounds like it's postponed.
Because I noticed on a second drawing, he had orange boxes around eight more lots. So it seems like it's modified a little bit from the original one. It's like he had the twenty-six lots and now there's eight that have orange boxes with no numbers. So I'm assuming the intent based on that drawing is that he's wanting to develop those eight lots as well. Um, so it'd be thirty-four lots versus twenty-six, but I don't need to.
It's amazing.
So it was like, it's like, I'll see if he's gotten like showing that the wetland credits, if he's doing a wetlands mitigation and got approval for that or what the status is of that. And then, then I think pre-op meeting, just to see if there's any other considerations because I believe that drawing also showed there, the plan for alley detention um, for stormwater detention using the alley and then a delineation of where all the wetlands were on, on specific.
Can I chime in another thing? So the, so all of this issue with the stormwater in particular is of very high concern, not only to these neighbors, but we had a visit from four, probably four or five other neighbors, I think in that same area where they, where they were expressing their concerns with the history of this project. Uh, the way that the, it was handled before, which they considered to be shoddy. So they were just, they had uh, it undermined their confidence in the city. They were upset and they were, and we very much said, as soon as we get a plan, we will make a public hearing and you guys will have plenty of time to take a look at it and express your concerns.
Yeah.
I don't know what we should do about that, but I just wanted to bring that up, that it's a highly sensitive issue and we believe that it can be resolved with everybody happy, but
Yeah.
not without giving them plenty of opportunity to respond.
Because wh- how odd like as a planner coming in, looking at that, if I don't feel like the plans fully fleshed out, like if there's some considerations that storm water, there's going to be water standing in a specific area. I would want to have a consultation with Chuck and, and with Public Works on, on some of those things as well.
Maybe even post, maybe even post stuff in ci- city hall. So people can come and take a look at maps and do, and have conversations or whatever. I mean, that's the kind of thing that might be necessary.
Yeah. And when it, from a planning perspective, it looks complete, like it's enough to be able to do a report and get it to a hearing. Um, because there'll be a subdivision. So in, in years, it would be a hearing and then also would have um, a consent decree or consent agenda for the city council. Um, if I'm remembering on, uh, the procedure on subdivision correctly, um, it would have that hearing and would, it would be the uh, it's like two hundred and fifty foot notice from the outer boundaries of that subdivision up.
Yeah, I wanted to add, what, what, saying, well, when Trevor bought that property, Steve told me, and I had to go see him and tell him, he's like, well, just run to the field and look at the developers too. Oh. I'm not okay with that.
Yeah.
Really.
Yeah. And yeah, it's like, and. Yeah. And if it's like adjacent to that property too, it's like, we want to incorporate that with any like, because the whole purpose of a subdivision is going to be developed, we've got to mitigate all of those issues. Yeah. And then exactly, and it's like. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah.
And Monroe has good land, but it needs to be more useful.
Yeah.
Coming in, um, making, yeah, road or useful land. A somebody to pay good money for a new house and find out when they're, when they're time.
It's going to have water running through and around. Yeah.
I mean, for instance, waiting in my place, I mean, I saw it firsthand, I knew what it was. But it would start under my whole front desk.
And it's not unprecedented, like when a subdivision gets approved, like, and we're dealing with one in Fulham with right now where they're going to have to do some off-site improvements um, as a condition of approval. And it's like, and so, and like, with, if the pro, when the process works, how it's supposed to to do the notice, we get the feedback from the neighbors. It's like, okay, this issue's going on here. This issue's going on here. As staff, I'm, I'm to respond and incorporate that into the staff report of findings of fact and, and then when I present the staff report to planning commission, it's like with all that, and then public testimony on top of that to make sure that if it's going to an approval, we have addressed all of those concerns and making sure that's in there. And in some cases, that is an off-site improvement and that's very important that those things are mitigated. Um, because we, yeah, you're right. We don't want to have it where it's like, we're now making uh, we're building housing and then we're now making a bigger flood issue. We've got to figure out what to do, where that water needs to go, what off-site improvements need to be a condition of approval. Any sort of maintenance agreement or agreement for those off-site improvements that'll have to be signed between the, the developer and, and the city um, to be able to do all that. So yes, it's like, I will definitely be your input's going to be necessary on this as we're, as we're going forward on. Yeah. Yeah.
Only on Tuesday.
Only on Tuesday, that's right.
He has an email address.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, just come talk to me and I'll give you contact information and then I, I can't remember my work cell number off the top of my head. Yeah. And so, and when I'm here, I'm, my goal is to try to get the communication if someone has concerns and then it would planning considerations, that's, that's kind of like the role that I'm going to be playing. You're welcome. Yeah. But yeah, it's like trying to see what's approved there, gets the pre-op meeting and then, and bring the, bring all of the minds into it to see like with the water, the above wa- above ground spring and how to mitigate that.
Well, and with surge two, that's essentially phase two of that project that was how many years ago now? When I was on planning commission with some of these guys.
Eight years ago.
Yeah.
And I think that's the eight homes you might see on his little.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
They already built those. And so he was waiting because that's all he had mitigated the wetlands for. So there's
That's when we got our lesson on.
I think.
Yeah.
Rock gardens.
And. Yep. So it sounds like if something wasn't, and it hasn't been, then we want to make sure that's in the utility changes.
And I remember him specifically saying that he wanted to do all the improvements, the streets, the curbs, the gutters and all that. He wanted to do that in phase two.
Right.
So there.
Right.
He should have done it in phase one because it's going to be a lot more expensive now.
Ash is a county road. And so there was some issues with the storm water. Anyway, I don't remember all the details now. It's been, like I said.
Interesting that.
Been, shall be interesting now.
Yeah. And it's like, with that, I'm going to have to bring Gordon in and it's like a couple of people from Benton County in on that, especially if Ash is still county street because they're going to have some say on kind of some of the improvements.
I also don't want to, I don't want to uh, tarnish this uh, your impressions of your duties, but uh, do you want to bring up that Serge has had a reputation of being a corner cutter. So I don't know how the, that accountability matrix works in terms of what he's done. And I don't, I'm, like I said, I don't have personal experience with that. I'm just sharing with you what I've heard in the past. So in terms of like making sure that Serge does what Serge says.
The flaw we had in our process before was we didn't have a follow-up process as far as what we, what he'd agreed to.
Accountability.
Didn't, didn't happen. We didn't have that piece in place in the city.
Need expertise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's instruments you can use as conditions, whether it's at the subdivision or at the site plan review phase. Um, it, when there's in, 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 like in the case of this subdivision that we're, it's like that I'm working on in Fulham, it's like, it's gonna, well, inspections, there's going to be an agreement because there's going to be some off-site facilities that they're going to have to provide. Um, in this case for connectivity. So it's like, it's one of those things that you, you can incorporate those at and it's like, and that would be appropriate as a condition and an agreement in the subdivision phase. And then, then site plan review, any of these things that are site by site specific, then those can be mitigated at that point. If there's any conditions, like if another easement needs to be that we didn't see originally and have it like reported as a, as separate instrument or whatever the case may be. It's like they're, yeah, it's like trying to make sure you get the enforcement ritual. And then of course, at the building permit and inspections, that's the final piece to make sure foundation's by the right spot and, and all that. So it's like, there, there are several places where the checks and balances can go.
Yeah. Michael does a great job for us when a when a home's passed all the building inspections, our building inspector, your building inspectors know even if the house passes the building inspection, it doesn't get certified of occupancy, it gets failed. And the comments are, it needs to pass city approval before the C O V is given. So our building officials don't give C O V. The city gives the C O V and that's the check and balance. Yeah. And that's just a conversation with Daryl to say when you finalize a home, say finalized, approved, but you actually fail it in the internal system in Exela. It fails and that triggers the city to have to go in there, do a final walkthrough, make sure all the conditions of approval have been met, not just that the home passes building inspection. You've got front yard, you got landscaping, you got potential sidewalk, offsite improvements, all those other things. And if you're letting your building official finalize the home, give C O V, move people in, you have no leverage anymore. So that's a very easy conversation I have with Daryl. And again, Michael can be the one to follow up, make sure when they're asking for C O V that all of the requirements have been done.
That's the piece we've been missing.
You have to have it. That's, that's your only leverage at that point is to have that C O V. Um, and we've gone to where we do a conditional C O V where you know, you get times where it's middle winter and all they have to do is pave the, the driveway and they can't pave the driveway for another three months. So you can do temporary C O V, come back three months later and make sure the driveway got installed, right? So there's workarounds where you can give temporary C O Vs, but you definitely, again, you don't want your building official being the one to issue the C O Vs. You want your city staff to be issuing those. And that's procedural. Michael can do that in a phone call.
Absolutely. That's awesome.
Were, would you have like any checklists for those?
It's a short list, but I mean typically depending on the subdivision, oftentimes a subdivision will have conditions of approval. It says every home has to have X, Y, and Z, you know, a, a tree in the front yard or whatever. So if it's different than the code or up and beyond what's in the code, because that's specific subdivision, those are going to be on the shortlist for your planner to check. And then, you know, we're always checking addresses, make sure they're lit, you know, um, that they didn't put the house number above the garage. There's no sign there or no light there. So nobody can read it. You gotta put a, you know, put the, put the numbers on the house underneath the light. Um, you know, and then of course, Public Works is checking for um, your clean outs, make sure those are accessible and cleaned out. All kinds of stuff. So it's a fairly short list. In Fulham, I think in a little bigger, but we have Public Works does their own shortlist of Public Works things you're looking at. And then planning has to sign off, fire signs off. And then on our case, our, our building permit clerk signs off. But again, that could be your, your planner. So he could be checking with fire, checking with Public Works, checking with building or with plant, with, excuse, with the, the building official, make sure the house is signed off. Um, before he issues the C O V and they just know they've got to get it from your planner, which means fire signed off, Public Works signed off and building signed off in addition to planning.
New sheriff's in town.
And it's, it's all things that are expected, right? There's no surprises there. It's here's a list of things you need to do. You want C O V? Did you get all the things done?
Be aware, he's been a developer for quite some time.
Yeah. And, and if you don't hold accountable, they know that too, right? And yeah, if they don't have to put that clean out in, or they don't have to put the numbers on the side, the house or put in a sidewalk, they won't, right? So you gotta, you gotta be checking on.
And then I have a note. My brain, it's been a long day. It's like I had a mention about the Bosoraba agreement in Oaks, but then I then wrote five fifty-five depot. And now I'm like, is that the same?
Yep.
Yes, that's it.
Okay. So we've already covered that. Awesome. Okay.
You, you've checked that.
All right. I don't know why I did it twice, but I, it was between five and six that I was working on that and trying to get that's fully done. Um, and then the other one, the next file folder was um, for Jody Khan's properties. Um, I just got the information from uh, Dawn on um, C P decision and the stat, the staff report. Um, so um, we can get on the fur lane um, portion, make sure that we got the notice. Lot, on the notice of decision for the conditional use permit for them. And then the lot line adjustment, it um, I spoke with Jody earlier. It looks like they, the county may have recorded it um, in the tax uh, uh, assessor side and not on the survey side. So I need to just double check that, make sure it, it is recorded. So that way everything is good to go on that one. Um, and I think once we, and then, and then working on a pre-op meeting for the uh, the, the ten pods that are going to be placed on the east side of the lot and bring all the people in the sea, but I need to do more research on how the additives play and then uh, on that one piece of how the non-conforming use is written. Uh, and because since I like was versed on the history that storage units were allowed in commercial in the past and then it changed. And then seeing what the additive use, especially if the mobile home uh, like combined with that as a zoning lot ends up being more like a caretaker facility, then does that meet the requirements of the mix of the, the overlay? So that's, that's another question. So once I see that, I need to look at that a little bit more. So I have everything first. So that way Jody can get, yes, we're, we got the green light to do a site plan review and whatnot. So that's the, that's the homework. I still got on that piece, but I will be continuing in contact with Jody on next steps and everything.
I just need that letter of approval.
Yeah, a letter of approval will be.
The four months I haven't got anything.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, and I can't speak on that piece. Yeah. Yeah. So I'm going to look at all like what um.
Steve will pay you.
What um, Dawn has sent me and uh, you know, if I have time on Thursday or Friday, I'll do it from, from Fulham with otherwise on Tuesday of next week. Yeah. But I still think of it, it's like with a sense of urgency that you, you get the decision with everything in there with the findings of fact. So I, I'm in, I'm in complete agreement. We got to get that to you ASAP.
Right.
On there. And then let's see, Bounce Property, I've been in contact with them. Um, but there, there were some questions about the sewer line extension, storm water. And then um, whether that changes S T C fees and then what the S T C fees will be since it went from a fourplex to a three-unit townhome. Um, but same footprint. So that's the only difference. Yeah.
That's news to me.
Yeah. I want to look through, I had to confirm. It's like, this looks different than that, but with, with the way that the review and approval, it's lesser. So I don't need to re.
Right.
Re, renotice or anything because it's a lesser intensity than what was previously approved. So we can still proceed with that. Um, but I need to see how that with S T C fees. And then the question about that there had to be an extension of the sewer line to the property that wasn't there already, does that change the cost? And so I, there will be more information that I need to do a little homework on to be able to fully answer their question. And part of that might be with Chuck and Chuck won't be back till next week. So I can't really respond to all that. It was like, until I actually have a conversation with Chuck. Um, and then, okay, I mentioned the search two twice, don't you? So the other one, there was um, documents for Pacific Edition. It was two drawings and it was showing a replat showing wetlands and alley detention. Why does that sound like I just? So that's still surge. So surge, okay. So I need to include that in with that doc because it, it was not in the same. Okay. So I will. Okay. So and then I think the other, okay, that's covered. Okay. So I guess the only other question I have is like with um, how would seem like right now, it's like, correct me on, on the process um, with S T C fees. We're collecting those before they're submitting the building permit. Is that because there's not an agreement with the, or am I miss totally misunderstanding that? Because it seems like the S T Cs are being collected.
I'm not exactly sure when we collect the S T Cs. Dawn would probably have a better idea on that.
Because I know you typically S T C views are collected uh, once like the building permit is, is like issued. And so what I want to make sure is like, we're following that process correctly, but then is there any agreement with Benton County? So it's like, because Monroe doesn't do their own billing permits. It goes through Benton County. But if Benton County does not know that, that, that S T C portion, what the city's fees are, there is no no way or no process of them collecting the fees and then getting that to the city. So my thought is like with how, and it was cursory explained by Dawn, that might be why it's being done that way. It's like, but I can see that there could be pushback because it's not typically how it's done it from the building. It's like, that's at the building permit approval. Once it's ready to issue, then they'll pay the S T C fees unless there was some sort of agreement with a um, deferred payment or what have you on that. But just that was something I just thought about, like, as I was going through and seeing that and, and like, when I had um, conversation with the bounce property, they're like, this is the first time we've ever done it this way, based on what kind of was cursory told of how it was being collected at that time.
Fulham with in a deer follow that. But they have an agreement with the county that, that much permits issued, then kick it back.
Well, Fulham, um, actually, it's like, even though the building review and everything's done with Benton County, we have a permit technician in Fulham. Well, Philomath, um actually, it's like, even though the building review and everything's done with Benton County, we have a permit technician in Philomath, so they issue. And I don't know what agreement Pat Hare, the city minister has with um. Uh, for Adair Village has with Benton County, but there, that's been separated out where it's like, they, once it's it, for like, any site plans were. Approved or subdivision where it's ready to have building permits, then it's going straight to the county. So I'm assuming. There's some sort of reimbursement agreement there, but I've never had the even like cursory question with the scope of what I've been doing for.
Benton County is hiring a new um planning. Director right now. And so I think once they get in, get settled, it's an easy conversation to have, but maybe worth talking to Pat as well. Again, the other advantage is he's working in Adair Village, so he's kinda getting the full spectrum. So. You're in Monroe or you're in Adair Village tomorrow, you can ask Pat tomorrow what the agreement is and follow up and. I, I can't imagine if, if they don't have an agreement already, that's a very simple conversation with the county. Either to collect them on your behalf and cut it, or more than likely, is they'll just wait to issue building permit until they get a thumbs up from the planner. Um, to issue it, you know, okay, the issue STC has been paid. It's the, the computer system, I mean, the county. And your planner are now all using Exela, which is the software system the state provides to track all of these permits. That are going through and there's a land use component as well. It's very easy to manipulate and put notes in. So it's very easy, even remotely. For Michael to be able to go into the Excel program, look at a property, see the status of the permit and put a note in there. To Daryl and or the planning, I mean, whoever he wants at the county side, you know, no STC is paid yet, hold permit, hold. Any of that type of stuff, wetlands on property, any of those types of notes. You, it's very simple to do and track and it timestamps everything, collects the metadata. It, it's, it's really, really handy. Um, you're not waiting on somebody maybe missing a, a voicemail or something, right? It's all integrated in the system. And it's a system that everybody's using right now. They're gonna be really familiar with it. So. Were those things used to maybe have been more complicated to have that correspondence? Really simple now, really, really simple.
Okay, I see. But that's an important thing to be very consistent on how those fees, they can get really confusing very fast.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and all of that, we've, we've had it recently where we had a, a customer. Paid their SDC fees and there's no way we could do the project. So. So now they're out twenty thousand dollars and, and. Well, you know, while they're trying to go through the, the process, see if it's even any good.
And what you submit for building permit isn't always what you end up getting a building permit for. It could change. You could have to. Add a faucet, you could have to add it, you know, there's different things that come in depending on what you submit. They might deny your building permit, have you change it and you gotta resubmit. Meanwhile, you're sitting on STCs that were. Inappropriate, because they were for what got submitted the first time, not the second or third time. So you really are, for best practices. Once your building has been inspected and the plans have been approved, that's what's getting built. That's when your planner's gonna look at whether the appropriate STC is to be charging. Set that up, get those paid, send a notice to the county and then they'll go ahead and release those back and you can issue the permits. So. Um, yeah, except it's a pretty streamlined process. And again, any developer. And the region is very familiar with that process. They, they know they're not gonna be, they typically aren't charged the STCs till they're ready to pick up their building permit. Very standard.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah, that, that is it.
Awesome.
Uh, I do have one other business item.
Okay.
So uh, city staff asked me this earlier today and they wanted me to ask the planning commissioners, pick your brain a little bit. So with STCs specifically tap inspection fees, do you guys remember if those were included? With the STCs or if they were separate?
Honestly, the STCs were one fee.
Okay.
There was nothing.
We didn't, we didn't.
We didn't differentiate. We didn't. Okay, it was a, it was a one flat fee.
That was kind of my impression too, but I wanted to run it by you guys.
One, one flat fee, period.
Okay. I guess that's our answer. Okay, that was easy.
What, you know, something's niggling at me. The, the, you said the bounce property, that was the, the uh four, four flex that turned into a three?
Yeah.
So I, I have a memory of there being some, some kinda handshake thing that has. From the utility side on the city side on that project. Uh, are you aware of it?
I am not.
So um. Something about the city plan, like the, there is a, maybe it was a stormwater upgrade to the corner of the, a corner of the street.
We have, Steve and I did talk about some stormwater upgrades over there.
That must be it.
Detail or anything to move forward yet.
Yeah. But there was a, the, I, I remember there was the thought process of trying to schedule that so that it would synchronize with the. With the work that was being done so that the. You know, things can connect.
That's why I remember like looking at what was in there for the staff for. And I don't have any notes that there was anything missing like with conditions or anything in the staff report, but I don't remember explicitly any condition of approval.
There might be minute, there might be something in the minutes from whatever meeting was that we, that we reviewed.
Been a year ago too.
Yeah, I might have to ask on the minutes.
But uh, it just um. Seemed like there was some nuance there in terms of, I remember just the idea they're handshaking with the city upgrade.
I can't remember.
And that also, by the way, kinda connects over there to the, to the house that has the backyard. That belongs to the city. That's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other comments or anything from me and the commissioner of city? Any questions or?
A huge thank you to the city of Philomath.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
We, we owe them. And thank you, Patrick.
Oh, my pleasure. My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
And thank you, Ralph, for coming and inputting we, and Mark, thanks for being here.
I'll be back. Of course.
Well, after reading through, y'all can come.
Does May sixth sound like a good next uh Tuesday, the first Tuesday of May? Is, is that a, how's that feel for you as far as uh just basically come and give it us a, a verbal update and we'll have a. Yeah, but comments.
Yeah, I think by May sixth, we'll have things going and then, and then maybe get some of these pre out meetings scheduled.
And thank you, Chris, for your input too. Like I said, sometimes we don't know what we don't know. And uh, we wanna do things that are appropriate. We wanna do things that are above board. We wanna be a support, but not in your way.
Yeah.
And so we don't wanna make extra work for you because your time is limited here too. So. But we also just wanna make sure that we don't repeat and are not in the weeds.
Yeah.
Uh, again, and then uh, I don't think we will be. I, I have complete confidence in what you guys are operating, so.
Once we get all the triage to some semblance of a finished line. And so then, but you, because there's a couple inconsistencies I found in the development code that impact, one impacts notices, but. Can get, go along, but maybe that was in the more up to date version when the um. What do I call it? The, the two overlays got added and maybe that got fixed at that time. I don't know often, looked there, but once I get access from DLCD for. Um, Monroe, then I'll be able to see those previous DLCD notices and now that'll help bridge some of my gaps as well, because. As I learned about the there, it's like, oh, I could see the whole history. This is fantastic.
Yeah, let, let, let me, let us know how we can help.
Okay, I'll, I'll send an email to you tomorrow um to add, like request to add um Monroe to my, my list of things.
We just found a nineteen eighty six zoning map for the city of Tangent. Joe is very happy. Well, thank you very much. If there's nothing else, we're gonna stay on the journey.